Are we recording?
Yep.
Thank you. A reminder to everyone who's here, the meeting is being digitally recorded, so please be respectful of each other and people speaking as well as when you're listening. First thing, is anyone here for open session? Okay. We'll go to announcements, communications.
All right, well, we're gonna start off with the people in the room. So, um, in case anyone in TV land missed it, uh, we had a lovely ceremony at the pavilion yesterday dedicating the Curtis Rec Field. You guys wanna come up here?
Come up here.
You wanna go up and talk about like your, your key and the dedication ceremony? It was a lovely ceremony dedicating, Kelly made this for everyone in TV land.
Thank you.
And we were all up there, Chris was there as well, um, everyone else, Nate was there as well. And it was, it was a very lovely ceremony, everyone that was here spoke, um, Jason spoke a lot. But it was good. Um, yeah, but that's okay, you, you were very heartfelt and it showed when you were speaking. But it was a dedication ceremony to, to welcome the pavilion, hand the pavilion over to the town, uh, for all the folks. And the Chris and myself with Nate being there, gave them a, um, thank you certificate from the town and all of our residents and everything. Uh, but yeah, if you wanna talk about maybe a little bit that you put into it, just there are people that weren't at the ceremony so they could hear it.
Oh, well, we're planning on speaking today.
Well, yeah, I'm gonna put you under the bus, you guys come.
Yeah.
Well, maybe started off with the fact that it was Alliance Club.
Yeah, yeah, it was, so it was, um, it was Alliance project, so it was the whole, the whole club was involved in, in, in building it. And, uh, you know, um, this idea started with Jason Gobar and I, uh, but the club really embraced it and, um, got behind it. And, uh, people like Ed stepped up huge and, uh, really helped manage the project or to get it to be standing and usable for Field Day. But now done to where we could, we could donate it, so it's a great project and, um, happy to have done it.
And you said that there's a grant coming for the tables and.
Yeah, so we have applied for, um, a grant to get, um, ten tables.
Yeah, ten tables, eight, uh, eight footers and two eight footers that will be handicap accessible.
Yep. Yep. Yes.
That'll be in there permanently?
Um, we haven't decided.
When needed.
We kind of talked about making them permanent, but I think if people wanna use the space for other things, then it may not be a good idea to attach them to, um, the concrete. But, um, there's also a ramp up there, so, um, you know, we were trying to do it with, you know, compliance in mind. And yeah, so two of the ten picnic tables will be, um, uh, handicap accessible. And, um, we should know about that grant shortly. It was approved by the district, Lions Club District thirty-three A, which is the group that we belong to in Massachusetts. Um, and I received notification today that, um, Lions Club International does have a copy of it and they will be voting on it soon. So hopefully that will come and that we would be able to put those in place in the spring.
Okay, yeah, that'll be the best time, because then we'll be back ready open and yeah.
Yep. Exactly, yep.
If anyone that does go up there, go check it out. The edges are a little dirt and mushy, don't step it up, you're gonna sink.
Mushy. Yeah. Yeah.
But they, they've sprayed grass on it, so it will grow.
Yep, hydroseed, it was hydroseeded last week.
Yeah, 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 so it will grow, just, just try to stay off the edges so we don't make big footprints.
Yep, yeah. And it was Alliance project, but it would not have been possible had we not had donations, um, from area businesses, um, private residents, um, made dona- donations. We took some of the ARPA money that the club was granted, um, we put that toward it. So, um, you know, it's, it's a, a beautiful space and I, I can't wait to see what people have in mind for it, because it really is gonna be incredible.
Well, I can definitely see soccer, baseball, uh, scouts.
Yeah, homeschool groups, I mean, that's the thing.
Yeah, just going up there and having a picnic, you know, just I could see everybody in town using it.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
It is a very lovely space.
Yep.
Well, as a, as a former coach of baseball and soccer, you know, you always try to have something at the end of the season for the kids.
Right.
And you're always looking for a, a venue, right?
Yeah.
You're trying to find a house or a location or someone who'll host it. But, um, but that thing up there now that's in place, it'll get a lot of use.
Yep. Yep, yeah, Katie and I, Girl Scouts, I mean, we were always looking for something.
Yeah.
Going to Gardner for bowling or something, you know, because you don't really have anything here, but now we have that option and it's.
Right. Right, right. Now it's there, I'm sure that'll be an option to use or something like that too.
Spectacular, yep, yep, yeah, so.
And this lovely key will be hanging here shortly, once we find the right spot for it, we'll, we'll get that done.
Yep. Sure. Yeah, somewhere, yeah. Yep.
Um, so yes, but thank you for, uh, all the hard work that was put into it. And it like, again, it really did come out very well, very well.
Yeah.
I want one of my back here.
Yeah, this.
But, yeah.
Jason Gobar.
Yeah, I know.
Gobard's.
I know, yeah, I know, Jason.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I'd like to personally thank you, uh, I would have been there myself, but my son had a hockey game in Marlboro. And we are definitely hockey parents and he plays in an elite team, so we had to be elsewhere, but, um.
Did they win?
Huh?
They win?
They lost at the last minute.
Oh.
Five to four, so.
That's how hockey goes.
Uh, so, but I wanna thank you all. I did get, get up there during the construction, at one time I was with, uh, talking to Chris and what you were relating to. The weather was not in your favor, there was a lot of mud.
Right.
But I was very impressed with, uh, everything involved, the materials themselves and the expertise.
Yeah. Beautiful, yeah.
Cause those are, those pieces of lumber are not small or light and it was, uh.
It was really pretty fast.
You were dealing with the roof at the time, you know, getting to it, so, uh, I wanna thank you personally.
They were pretty fast.
And then again, also thank you on behalf of the town and the rest of the board, uh, for the donation. It was very, very generous and it'll be here long after all of us and it's a nice thing to have.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
We were talking before the meeting started, cause I was looking at that and I was asking if we might, if somebody might have, or we could get a good picture of the, uh, pavilion so that we can hang it up in here and also put the key with it.
Oh, that would be nice, yeah, yeah.
So it's something we'd like to, you know, look into.
Yeah. Yeah.
Chris reminded me, but it'll be here for several hundred years.
The key doesn't really work, you know.
There's no.
The key doesn't really work, you know.
There's no magic trap door in the back, come on.
No, 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 no.
It's the right size for the building, actually.
Right, exactly.
But again, uh, thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I think that, you know, speaking for the club, we're really proud of it. And I, I mean, it just, when Jay came to the club, um, along with Jake Obar, I think it was February.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, sort of pitched the idea, I never could have imagined how beautiful it would come out. I mean, it really is something to see. And I've heard lots of really good feedback from people that are people, um, you know, cause I'm right next door and I have people that come and say, hey, what's going on next door? You know, they, they really wanna know and they're excited to use it and it's just really is.
No, it's extremely impressive, no corners of effect, I mean, it, it just jumps out to each other that way, it's just beautiful.
Yeah. We kept saying, can you believe we made that?
It's a nice addition to the park, really.
Yeah, yeah. Definitely will be, future generations will enjoy it, not just us.
Absolutely.
Is there, is there a plaque on the, uh, structure itself saying that it came from you, there is? Okay, I gotta get.
Yeah, so we solicited, um, businesses for donations, um, of, you know, monetary donations and services. And, um, everyone that contributed, um, we did put, um, on a plaque.
Excellent.
And even we offered, you know, you could buy a post basically, so, you know, each post really has something on it.
Oh, really? Oh, cool.
Well, that's a good idea, nice.
Yeah, yep.
Cause you had a lot of people working.
Yep, yep, and, um, and I think picnic tables too, um, we had some people that if they wanted to contribute to something, they could.
Donate the table or something?
Yeah, some of the picnic table, but, yep, yep.
Donate a picnic table, donate a beam.
Sure.
But cause we didn't have the picnic tables, we gave all those that donated enough for picnic tables, we gave them a beam.
Yeah. And, um, we do have a plaque that's coming, um, to put somewhere on it, maybe up the top that says that it was Alliance Club project.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, yeah.
Yeah, mm-hmm, yep, yeah, so we have a.
It's definitely beautiful, I love it.
One of the plaques, um, has the Lions Club logo and then the donors, um, listed. And then, um, we're having another plaque made that's just for the lot, saying it's Alliance Club project.
Excellent.
We made the design originally, was it your design?
No, so we, uh, someone that Jason works with that, uh, has designed it in the past, we worked with him, uh, on it, on the design of it. Just the, uh, CAD drawings of it all. And, um, we tried to keep it, uh, we could get really ornate and, and really complex with it. But because it was a, a project where a bunch of, um, you know, schmoes like me are gonna come and, uh, be, you know, working on it and people that don't necessarily know. We wanted to keep the complexity down a little bit, just so that it would, uh, it could be a, uh, something that we all work on. Jason had, was letting us use his tools, you know, these big saws and that, that, you know, I'm, I'm familiar with carch and stuff, like this skill saw, I mean, this, you know, circular saw is huge for cutting beams.
And the block and tackle.
You know, and a big, yeah, a big, a big planer that you're, that you're, uh, you know, power planer that you're using and the massive chisels and all that. It's not your normal tools and stuff, so you got people that don't know how to use this stuff and up there, and you know, he was letting us do all that. He's showing us how to lay out and, and, uh, you know, where to, you know, how to draw the, the marks and, um, how it was all, you know, the whole process and traditions that go into it. You know, Jason's really familiar with it and he was passing that along. So it's important to get, you know, to know the, that process as much as build it. And, uh, so that, uh, that went into the design of it, so when Jason was a big part of that. And, uh, then after that, it went to an engineer, uh, building inspector had told us we needed to have an engineering plan done. So it's all done to a, uh, it's all been stamped by an engineer and, um, I'll follow that, that process throughout too.
Great.
And we have an occupancy permit.
And we have an occupancy permit, we do, we did, we signed up on it last week.
What, has there been any thought to, um, security? Since it is wide open? As far as people, you know, doing carvings and stuff like that.
Yeah, that was one concern that we had was vandalism. I mean, we hoped that people would be respectful, but we know how that goes, there's a lot of kids that hang out up there. Um, so, um, I, I know that we looked into possibly, um, putting security cameras up there, but the internet, the wifi is just horrible. So, I mean, it's something that we talked about, um.
Will there be illumination on it like for twenty-four hours a day, in that sense?
So, uh, there's, so there's electric, there's electricity in the, in the, uh, the poles, uh, the flag poles and then the, and actually in the pavilion and in the.
By the bandstand.
Uh, in the bandstand. We were thinking, uh, you know, we, we could put a security light up there that, that lights up, you know, a motion light that, you know, so if anybody's up there after dark, you know, we see illuminated. Probably may put it on the bandstand that way, facing that way.
Like a motion detector and that would kind of discourage someone who's all sitting there standing in bright light, you know?
There's. Yeah.
That's, that's right, yeah.
There's electricity in the bands, in, in the pavilion, like we ran it over there, there's a plug.
Oh, there actually is a plug over there.
There's a plug, yeah, we're, we're next to the post, next to where we were sitting yesterday.
Okay.
There's, there's two outlets there, three outlets there. Um, and the ability to take off and run more lights out of that. There's three circuits underneath the bandstand, uh, that we put in. So, uh, lights could be put up in there, we, well, there's a certain point where we just said, you know, uh, that's a, that's a, if we put lights and there's, and there's electricity being used and that's gonna be an expense to the town, so we just kinda said, let's, let's not, uh, let's not get into all that. But, um, it's all there to do and we figured we could work it out and talk some.
Now, as far as the upkeep, I'm just curious, you, the Lions, you built it and you donated it to the town and so forth. Will you still be overseeing it, so to speak, or will we be?
Nope. We, we will, yeah.
We will, okay.
So I know in the next year, uh, there's, there's things with that kind of frame where like, probably about a year go by and go back up in there and it's, you know, maybe tight, make, make sure the shims are tight and there's things that just are, are, are right, um, things like that. And then we'll, we'll probably go back and definitely look at, um, you know, if, if, um, you know, I, I say I wanna speak for the club, but if we, if, if in the future there's something.
Yeah. Yeah, so the bandstand, um, was built by the Hubbardston Lions Club back in nineteen ninety-two. So, um, and we have always just, um, assumed responsibility for that. It was also turned over to the town, but, you know, we built it, we love it, we wanna maintain it.
It's the baby, yeah.
You know, exactly, so we have always, um, you know, built the stairs when they needed it to, you know, to be done. And there's other things that we have done, um, I think they just did the roof on it, but I'm not quite sure if we did that or not, the town did that, yeah.
Town did that.
Uh, uh, no, the town did the roof, but yeah, you guys did the stairs recently.
But, you know, right, I mean, we wanna see it, you know, last, so, uh, and I think that it's kind of the same thing with the pavilion, you know, um. I, I think we would take it upon ourselves to maintain it, um, but if there is something that requires, you know.
It's a partnership.
Exactly, yeah. So, um, you know, we wanna see people, like I said, be respectful of it and be able to use it and we want it to last for generations, so.
And there is interest from a town perspective in putting some sort of camera up there, but with the, for the bandstands, snack shack and the gazebo.
Right, yeah, yeah, right.
Because there have been a couple of, not huge issues, but there have been a couple of issues. But as we move on, money is certainly tight right now, but as we move on, that something, lights and cameras, we can look into over the years, that's, as we.
Right. Yeah.
Well, a few years back, we had that, the issues with the cement benches, remember that?
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
And just something as a deterrent, I mean, you know, um, kids will be kids, obviously, but, you know, just.
Yeah.
Yeah, lights are usually the best deterrent, they're the cheapest to run to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I think that when we were working on it, also we had a lot of material up there and the police department just kind of offered to kind of swing through and just check on it for us. And, you know, maybe that could be something, I know that they check on all the businesses every single night, because, you know, they come through me. So, you know, maybe it's something that they could add to their list, just to kind of rip the spot, so that people know that it's going to be patrolled and maybe they wouldn't take the chance, so.
I'd like to thank the highway department again, because I was sort of in the landscaping end of things and, uh, uh, they really helped me out a lot. You know, it's a wet spot, big wet spot in the back there and brought in a little bit of material that they had, that they, uh, that the project and this town center had. And, uh, yeah, they, they were great to work with and, uh, I was gonna ask the board, uh, does this require a vote, a vote, a vote of the select board to accept it? And then does that have to go to a town meeting? Nope.
Nope.
Nope. They can take one if they, if the chair sees fit and, but they did early, early on accept the donation before you got, got going.
Right.
Yeah, you can't be forced at that time, yeah, yeah, so I don't see any need.
Yeah.
Seems like a long time ago.
Many, many moons, right?
Yeah.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
Thank you.
Very proud to be able to present it to you.
Excellent work.
Well, yeah, and from the public side of things, you know.
I wanna go take a close look at it, cause it's very tedious work, right?
It's a piece of art.
It's nice to have a group in town with a reputation, uh, you know, we can give carp watch and say, you know, we know your reputation, you're an infame, how great, how great you do it.
Yeah, don't tell many people, cause we might be done for a little while. We need a break, thank you.
I heard you already had enough to practice.
Yeah, it's already there, yeah.
Thirty-one years.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good to see you, Kelly, take care.
Same here, Jeff, we'll see you soon, thanks, all right, my guys.
All right, okay, so now for the rest of the stuff, that we want to do that first, cause that, they were here, um, we don't wanna hold them up. All right, so we did have a townwide, and guess what, it rained, awesome. Like every other weekend and every other event, everybody's had. It, the rain did stay off till about noon and people did sell stuff, but yeah, well, it's just seriously. And then we had a bottle and can drive as well for Boy Scouts, and guess what, it rained! Uh, so, but that went well and thank everyone for dropping off any bottles and cans that you did, thank you very much, the boys really appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, the next things we have up, if you have not heard, tomorrow night at six-thirty over at the senior center, we have candidates night. It'll be the candidates that are running for, um, Ann Goby's seat, so you can meet and greet them. And they will be, not necessarily debating, but answering questions.
Yes, answering questions.
That we give them, so that way you can actually learn what these candidates are about. If you have not met them, please come to the senior center again tomorrow at six-thirty Tuesday, uh, on October third, just in case you're checking this out later. Um, but yeah, it'll be over there. The next thing we have up, we have two things this weekend, and guess what, it's gonna rain!
Yeah, Saturday's supposed to be a real downpour.
So, I know.
Yeah.
So, um, we do have rain dates of the Sunday, so bear with me, I'm gonna say Saturday, but with a possibility of rain dates for both of them. One is for the Boy Scouts, it's a costume fun run, this is the first year. It's fifteen dollars per person and thirty per family. Everyone's gonna meet at the rec field, we're going to run, walk, crawl, I don't care what you do. Bring your strollers with the kids in there, that's fine, start at High Street, walk down to, uh, excuse me, start at the rec field, walk down to High Street, around, back to the rec field. It's, I think, about three K total, but costumes, it's meant to be fun, it's meant to be a fundraiser for Boy Scouts, it's meant to get out and get some exercise. It's an all-around good thing, I encourage people to come out. It's not, we tried to do it so it would raise funds, but at the same time not be overly burdensome on a family. Um, we do have a prize for best costume for adult and best costume for child. And everyone will get a little snack, um, thanks to the, um, Stars and Stripes Diner, they are donating some, uh, little snacks for, cause after you run, you're supposed to get a snack and some, something to drink as well. Thank you, Wanda, for that. And they will also get a participation ribbon, cause everybody needs a ribbon. But it's gonna be fun, again, hopefully.
What's, what's it called, Katie, I'm sorry?
Costume Fun Run.
Costume Fun Run, okay.
Yes, so bring it, you know, bust out the Halloween costume, uh. Just wait, it's gonna be good stuff, we've, I don't know how we don't get kicked out of the Halloween store, me and my family. We got some good ones, so definitely come down, that is again, at ten AM, hopefully Saturday, but if not, it'll be Sunday. And then we have Non-Such Night, which again, hopefully Saturday, but if not, Sunday. We have, um, a band, ASB, playing, this starts at four o'clock, the band will be there till six-thirty playing. They are a soul funk and rhythm and blues band. Jacmos will be there with some meatball subs and meatball grinders, they'll also have sandwiches. And I believe they said, like, cookies and treats, like, stuff like that. Um, and then the Stars and Stripes Diner is coming, Wanda said she's gonna come with some grilled cheeses and like a snack pack with some potato chips and like chips and things like that. So, um, the Girl Scouts will be there, I have fire pits, the kids are gonna do some smores and the boys are gonna do maybe some popcorn. If not, the girls are gonna do the popcorn, it doesn't, we'll figure it out.
This is on?
But this is Saturday evening, if not, yes, if not, it'll be Sunday evening. And then after the band stops at six-thirty, we're gonna show a movie, we're showing, um, the Lego Movie. Which again, if you haven't seen it in forever, because it came out in two thousand, two thousand fourteen, I believe, it is more relevant now than it was back then, um, with the political undertones. But it's still super funny and kids will love it and it's good for all ages. So that is Non-Such Night this weekend, starts at four at the rec field on most likely Saturday, but if not, it'll be Sunday, depending on the rain. So the next thing we have is October eighteenth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty, we have Taste of Hubbardston. Uh, this is done by the EDC, uh, uh, our chair Whitney is taking the helm on this. Um, and she's still working out the details on some things. But the goal is, is to incorporate a lot of Hubbardston-based foods and things like that. And to kind of have a taste of Hubbardston and showcase a lot of the businesses, um, and farms in the area, hopefully, is my gist of it. Again, October eighteenth, five-thirty to seven-thirty, the location, we have two locations, we're still trying to work out which one it's gonna be. Possibly either the library or Pinecrest, I'm not totally sure which one we need permissions for things, so we actually have to get these, even though we're the town. So anyway, uh, but that's coming up, more details, we will make sure we have a release out when it's, everything's finalized, which should be in the next couple of days. All right, and then we have the Haunted Halloween Walk, which is done by the Lions. This year it's going to be at the rec field on the twentieth and twenty-first, from five-thirty to nine-thirty both nights. Did you guys get that? Hold on, they're writing. So the twentieth and twenty-first, five-thirty to nine-thirty at the rec field, the Haunted Halloween Walk.
And where's the walk going?
I'm not totally sure, around, around the rec field. Somewhere. I asked yesterday, they weren't, uh, bubbling totally.
It's a surprise, right, because it's haunted.
Yeah, it's gonna be, you know, it's haunted, we're gonna find out.
It's not, it's not haunted if you already know.
Yes, you can go all the details. Um, you get the gist of it with my stuff, okay? And then we have Special Town Meeting, October twenty-sixth at seven PM, this will be in the gym. We have six articles, you can hear about them in a little bit and in this meeting, stay tuned. But that is October twenty-sixth at seven PM. Then as always, we have the Halloween Horribles Parade on October twenty-eighth at twelve PM. You start out at the, uh, Fire Station One, which is the one right across from Mr. Mike's. And the kids walk down to the school. And then afterwards, there's a little party in the school and then there's a little magician show, everyone is welcome. All they ask is you donate a bag of candy and it goes to the party in Main Street walkers and, uh, Main Street homes and stuff like that. So bring a bag of candy, have your kids dress up in Halloween costumes, again, it's October twenty-eighth, twelve PM, and it's open to all. And then for the people that have already asked me, Trick or Treating is always on October thirty-first from five to eight in this town. I've already been asked a few times, I'm like, it's not even October, people. But yes, Trick or Treating is always October thirty-first, five to eight, there will be the party in the, the block party in the parking lot here. Um, Main Street will be the gist of everything, some High Street, stuff like that, but the bulk of it is right here. Everyone's encouraged to come on down. And then finally, taxes are due November first, but nobody wants to think about that, and those are real estate taxes.
Question, um, for the Main Street, I think we're getting new lights, will it be done by then?
Yeah. Lights?
Will we be getting? No.
We have streetlights, but that's like the regular lights.
Yeah. They are still there or they're, I'm beginning to remember.
Uh, I think they're still there, yeah, they're still there, they just got shifted over, we're not getting anything fancy.
Yeah, no, I know, I think we're getting some like low noise lights though, right?
Yeah.
Was, are they?
No, so they're digging a, I forget the fancy word for ditch, to put in.
No.
Okay.
Conduit.
A conduit to potentially put in lights later.
But that's only, no, but that's only in front, like right there.
That is, that is, yeah.
So that would be like literally right in front of the school and, yeah, it's not all the way down.
I wasn't sure if it was part of the new project, but it's what they're saying.
Yeah, no, unfortunately not, that kind of cash that, yeah.
No, that's fine, it is light, I'm.
Nobody has, all right, that's all I got for this month.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, um, we're going to the, uh, item four, Grant Match presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to introduce Michael Grash, Grace? Hi, Michael, thank you for joining us today. Michael reached out to me a few weeks ago in kind of a cold call fashion, wanting to make a presentation on some of the work that his company that he works for, Grant Match, does. They work with businesses and municipalities to determine how they can assist with grants. After talking to Michael for about a half hour, I thought it was a decent idea. I was talking to him about how they work with municipalities to determine what they would be interested in. Even at the very end, you're not committed, I'll let him kind of give the, the pitch this evening. He did send a draft contract and some information, but we are by no means committed to anything this evening. So with that, I wanna welcome Michael to the meeting.
Great, thank you, Nathan, and thank you, everyone, for having me. Um, I'm just going to see if I can share a little bit.
I can give you permissions to share.
Okay, well, I'm not seeing, oh, co-host there, oops.
What's happening? It's taking a second, there we go.
Oh, wow.
Okay, can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
It's smaller than it was.
Okay.
It's smaller than it was.
You need to enlarge it.
Let me see if I can. Oh, fine, you can, you can do it on the thing itself, right?
Yeah, I think I've got mine to the full screen on my screen.
Yeah, we might have to do it on our end.
Okay, well, so the company is Grant Match, so we've been around for over thirty years now. We work with municipalities, uh, towns, villages, cities. We also work with for-profit organizations, as Nathan said, usually manufacturing type companies, who would manufacturing or otherwise.
The biggest of them, I get it for now.
Um, and we help access grant funding. So typically the way we work is through projects, our clients let us know sort of what are your upcoming projects. We'll take a look to see, you know, if we find any grants that might match with the projects that you're doing. Sometimes there's not a match, sometimes there is. When we find a match, then we offer to do the writing, uh, you know, any sort of research required to get those things through to approval. We work on a contingency, so the marketing term is success fee, which means we have to be successful and you have to have been approved for a grant for us to charge any fees. Um, we're very confident in, in our abilities to get grant funding. And also we know, especially with municipalities, it's a long game, like not every year is there gonna be, you know, a big project that you're gonna require help with. You know, but some years there will be and in, in those years, we're there to help, uh, with the planning and the execution of these programs. As you know, like some of these grants can really get into really large numbers and be quite comp. As you know, like some of these grants can really get into really large numbers and be quite complicated with, you know, engineering or financial reporting. The ones we offer to help with are typically a hundred plus hours, the ones that are really complicated and and quite competitive. You you mentioned earlier, I heard someone saying you you applied for a grant for some tables. You know, we will always point out any grants that we see that we think would be useful for you, but you know, we're not trying to nickel and dime our clients uh in terms of just helping with grants that you could have got on your own or the ones that aren't complicated to apply for. You know, we're there to help with, we're we're there to add value. We're not trying to replace any grant writing that you're already doing. We're there to either find grants that you aren't aware of or help with the large, more complicated ones that are gonna take some time and have a higher risk of adopting and approval. This is just to speak to some of our software. So over I'll I'll share my, can I just, can you see the screen as I switch it here?
I think uh we are still watching the one that's the call is on.
Oh, okay. Let me see if I can.
Yeah, it's giving you a warning about infinity mirroring.
Oh.
Yeah, so you have to hit, you have to ignore the warning now.
Oh, oh.
And now we're infinity mirroring.
Okay, let's see this.
Nice.
That's a long Halloween. Good.
Okay, let me try this one sec.
That's better.
Here we go. How about this? Can you see this now?
Yep. Oh, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
That's significantly better.
Yep.
So this is just an example of our our the software that we use internally. You know, I put uh federal and state level grants in here. As you can see, there's, I don't know, we've got about six pages here. That can number can go up and down sort of depending on what's being offered. Uh we've developed a pretty robust system over the last decade or so. We've got a team of maybe ten data scientists that keep this up to date every week. But the idea is, you know, we should be able to inform you of any grants that there are for any projects that you're doing. And then we'll decide together which ones you would want our help with, you know, which ones that you're you're gonna do on your own. So the idea would be typically our our clients will share their capital budget once it's ready. We'll take a look through that uh and get back to you with where we see funding opportunities. You know, once we shortlist some grants that you are interested in, then we would um, you know, decide which ones that we think you have a strong eligibility for and which ones you're gonna look after yourselves. And then we'll go after whichever grants we decide. Signing up with us, there's no fees, there's no hourly, there's no administrative fees. It just means we assign a resource uh who's gonna just constantly work with you until we get to the point where we have a grant to go after. You know, with municipalities, uh it's just a matter of when, not if, obviously, for when there's gonna be some good grant opportunities. Obviously, you can see some of these, the amounts are really large. Uh those are typically gonna be more of your infrastructure type projects. Uh but there can be money for everything. Like we really encourage clients at the beginning to just share. Anytime you're spending money that you would consider outside of day-to-day or monthly operating costs, that would be a great time to check to see if there's any funding. For those of you that do the grant writing there, I'm sure you're aware that for a lot of these brands, you wanna get the approval before you start in current costs. Uh so you know, the planning stage is a great time to check and see if there might be any uh any grant funding available for your projects. And the other nice thing about us being on contingency is you can rest assured, we're not here to waste anybody's time. If we don't think you've got a very good chance of getting a grant, we'll be very upfront uh with what we think your chances are. Um I'm not sure, I don't think I mentioned the fee structure. It's ten, five, so ten percent on approval amounts uh up to a million. If it's something really large, five percent on amounts over a million. And just to be very clear on that, if we were to write a grant and get declined, there would be no fees from us. Uh it's only for successful little grant where you where you've been approved and you're gonna receive the funding. So I mean, I I wanna respect your time here. That's sort of the quick pitch. Is I see a hand up there?
Even up, say we decide to work with Grant Match and then you had a conversation with me and the select board and some of the staff and we picked a number of priorities and you applied for one and got a grant. But at that time, it would not be feasible for us to accept, let's say it's a two million dollar grant and ten and five percent of that's just too much for us to pay on that day. We could then deny it with no consequence, correct?
Uh that is correct. You know, we we do hope that uh you know, once we decide to move forward on something that is a project you're gonna be able to execute on. But we do understand uh that lots of reasons can happen where you won't be able to move forward on a project. Uh Heather, I see you're in that. Sorry, did I answer that to your satisfaction?
Yes.
Okay, Heather.
So when you guys apply for grants, there is a lot of times grants that have administrative costs associated with them. Is that something you guys will often or sometimes consider putting in for for your percentage so that the grant itself would cover your expenses?
We certainly would do that whenever possible. Like as you know, some grants won't allow for that. Most of the grants we're working with are contribution agreements, so you're putting in a portion uh yourselves. So typically, our fee would be a consulting fee out of your side of it, but any any opportunity, if there is an opportunity to include our fee in the grant itself, we certainly would make you aware of that and would recommend it to you.
Okay, so in the interactive dialogue that we would have with you prior to you applying for a grant on our behalf in the first place, we would know pretty much upfront what the amount of the grant is that we're looking at and approximately what the cost would be if you were successful.
That's correct. So first, yeah, we start sort of high level, we'll shortlist which grants we think might work. Once we shortlist some that look good, then we can get really specific with eligibility requirements. You know, what we're gonna acquire from you to get the project done and and to what you said, Heather, exactly. We'll tell you how much we think you can get. And at that point, you can calculate what our fee would be.
Do you have any examples in Massachusetts communities of grants that you've gone after for them?
Uh you know what? I don't think this this would be our first Massachusetts client, so on a state level, no. Federally, you know, we've got uh I can give you lots of examples, but uh you would be our first Massachusetts.
Where are you located, Michael?
I am personally in Toronto. Our head office uh is in Lynchburg, Virginia.
Lynchburg.
That's where our president uh, your eyes go.
Left side, as I just started with Canada. No, it's the uh, oh, by the natural bridge.
And we have we have another office in uh Deerfield. Mission.
Okay, I was gonna say, which Deerfield? I was like, that's.
I'm familiar. I got there too.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Does anybody else?
And so, okay, great. I appreciate the time. All I finish with is, yeah, there's no risk to to sign up with us. Um you know, if there are some projects that that are coming up, we'd be happy to take a look and kind of list where we see some funding opportunities. As you, I'm sure you're aware, there's a lot of money out there right now for various types of projects, so uh depending on what you need to be, you might be in a good position to access them.
Have you been successful with small towns like ourselves?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, I'd say we prefer working with smaller towns. Uh we have very big city clients as well. Uh those ones you deal with more on a department type level, you know, depending on which department is looking after uh which projects. I, the the smaller towns is much, it's um, if we find that the relationship is a lot better, we we can, you know, we help everyone sort of usually with the smaller towns, everyone works together on projects, which makes it uh a lot more easy to collaborate and get all the information to push the applications.
So another question, Michael. So your company, is it the only game in town or are there other companies out there that compete against you guys?
We see some competitors. Um so far from what I've seen, theirs is more of an upfront uh hourly strategy. I haven't seen uh any competitors. There there are some competitors in Canada that do the contingency, I don't know if the pool or I haven't come across any in the States. There are there are other companies that will often do the grant writing, and they'll do that on an hourly. Uh so you'll pay upfront and you'll pay either way regardless of uh approval.
So, so these are like private investors who grant the money, like where the actual money comes from?
Thank you.
It could be a variety of, well, Michael, you can't, he's asked if the grants were from private investigators, but I know investors, private investigator or something different.
Do we have?
Private investors or large corporations or.
Yes, we we would like to know who's offering the money, uh you know, whether it's federal, state level, whether it's private, you know, there's regional funding. So you would know who's offering the funding as well. Once we, that's all part of sort of the shortlist. Like we always recommend, you know, there's thousands and thousands of grants out there, so to just talk about grants in general is is quite a broad subject. So that's why we always give us a few projects and then we can really narrow down on specifically what you can apply for. And you know, it can help with the planning stages as well, cause there's a lot of projects every municipality needs to do at some point. Um so knowing what's on the books, that the things that you need to do, that can sometimes help us with the strategy as well. Because we'll know, you know, certain funds are are just short. They may open for four to six weeks once in a while, maybe once ever, and then they close and miss your opportunity. Other ones that we know they're gonna be coming around, you know, every year, so you can start to make some longer term plans for uh for some of the funding for your projects. Like the the idea with these grants is that they're trying to encourage communities to execute on projects that they know we need to do. Like infrastructure is is starting to crumble uh across the country and and there's uh, you know, that's happening everywhere. Uh so they're really trying to encourage communities to to make these investments now or sooner rather than later.
So besides just hunting for a grant as you were describing it, once you find one, uh do you do all the processing, all the application for the uh client?
Yeah.
And uh at what point do you, assuming, let's say, the grant was granted and the client, you know, said yes, where, at what point does your company stop and it's left? Do you see the project through or not?
That's a great question. Yeah, that's a great question. So yeah, we're we're there, the whole application process, obviously, we're there to help with. And and you know, I should also add that we will do all the work, but we send you everything, like you're the one submitting. You review everything that we do. There's nothing app, there's nothing being sent in that you don't uh add approval. And then we're there for, the way we describe it and the working agreement is the first round of compliance reporting, uh which for most grants will cover pretty much what you need to do. Like some of the really big ones where you can approve for a grant where maybe the project is gonna take five years and you're gonna have to check in on certain milestones. You know, by year two or three, we aren't providing that much value in that we can't, you you're the one that has all the information on how the projects are going and what the updates are.
Sure.
But absolutely, the, you know, once you get that approval, there is a lot of compliance reporting in the first round and we help with that as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Something we'd be looking into, as I had casually mentioned to you when we talked last week, is have you seen any type of grants during your research or work that would provide engineering funds for something like a public safety building or a public, just a public municipal building in general? Cause that is something we would be interested in looking at. It's something that's on our long range plan is to look into the feasibility of a public safety building?
Yeah, so short answer, yes, there's there's lots of funding out there for buildings and then sort of depending on the nature of the project, you decide sort of what angle you would go at, like. So what I mean by that is there's a lot of environmental funding out there, for instance, so new builds, it's pretty hard to hit some of these markers. You know, they wanna see net zero by a certain year or something like that, which is not to say it's not achievable. But then there's also retrofitting of existing buildings. In that regard, it can be easier to make uh an environmental case cause most of the stuff you're replacing is gonna be far more efficient than any of the equipment that was in there already. Um and then also, you know, there's there's funding out there for just um, depending on what you were gonna do, like I know you're saying public works or or public safety, but depending on what you put in the building, that can broaden stuff you can apply for as well. Like if it's a community building, for instance, uh that can get you access to certain types of funding that maybe just the building on its own will. So there's lo, there's lots of strategies to look at and we would make recommendations sort of depending on what's out there um and and what it is that you need to do.
Interesting. Boiler.
Yeah, I know, I was just thinking of that too. Boiler, public safety, whatever, some kind of building.
Yeah, like most buildings, by the time you're replacing a boiler, it's got it, it's probably infinitely more efficient than whatever boiler you had in there before. And sometimes, depending on the grants that are being offered, that alone will achieve an environmental improvement. You know, new windows, new roofs, things like that. A lot of, a lot, there's a lot of of environmental angles for.
Right. Roof is done. So sometimes uh like you said, let's say we're going after a boiler for a school. Um you know, part of that could be updating the windows also in the school? Whatever, to make it more efficient?
Yes. Usually, the environmental type grants, yeah, they'll be sort of a broad category, so you know, if you play like HVAC equipment, stuff like that, windows, roofs, uh there's, yeah, there's lots of angles to to approve the the GHG or or uh output of the of the building.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you. For the most part, Massachusetts leads the way when it comes to the green communities initiatives that we are going through. I actually have a giant check in the corner presented to us from three years ago. So we've done a fair amount of projects in the green community space. It's something that I looked into for the boiler that we're all kind of tiptoeing around and it did not qualify. So that's something that if we did end up working together, I would bring up relatively quickly. We are working on our capital improvement plan for the next five years right now. It's almost, it's on kind of my table, cause all the departments and boards have turned in their submittals. So that's something that we will have done within the coming weeks, if not a month. If we did work together, something I did already explain to them is that I, as town administrator, the lead grant writer, would continue doing local and state grant writing and approaching and figuring out the types of initiatives we wanna do on that level. And I would use you to do more of a more difficult reach or a larger project or kind of a wish list. That's something you are comfortable with?
Absolutely, that's that. We we actually love to work like that. And we always, you know, we prefer to work with the grant writers. Like sometimes it's seen as a, we see it as competition, which is not, you know, the scenario you described is exactly how we like to work. I mean, a five-year capital budget list, we can really get ahead of the ball uh and make some plans in terms of grant funding there. And you know, knowing what your grant writers are going after, uh it helps us to, you know, focus our time in the right categories. And plus, we will will throw, anytime we see a grant uh that your grant writer might be interested, we'll pass those over as well. Like we're, we are looking to help with sort of the larger type funds and more complicated ones that you said. So you know, the smaller funds, the local funds, especially anything you've already been successful with in the past, like we're, that those, we're not trying to, you you don't have to give us any grants. That's the, you decide which ones we go after.
Great. Anything else? Anybody?
No.
What else said, I guess?
And I guess I'll just finish with the, you know, in terms of the environmental side of things too, just from what you were telling me there. Um there's a lot of stuff on the park and rec side as well.
Yeah.
That would also be, so you know, like putting in like urban forest projects and things like that. There's a lot of that.
That's major.
Or fixing up landscape brownfield, green elegant, all kinds of projects like that. Uh there's a lot of funding for things like that right now.
Okay, perfect.
Michael, thank you so much for coming out and I'll be in touch one way or another. We'll either open this up after you're gone or I'll open it up at a future meeting. I will let the chairman obviously decide on how he goes about that, but thank you very, very much.
Great, thank you all for having me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Interesting.
Yeah, definitely interesting, especially for what we're thinking, you know, we can use all the help we can get.
Yeah, I mean, they seem to have that pulse of everything that's available out there. I mean, there's a lot to do.
Certainly beyond our what our scope would need.
To spend twenty grand instead of two hundred grand on a boiler or something, you know what I mean? That's how I read it.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. We we need help.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have a.
Yeah.
So being a, being a grant, it will be awarded money, right? Not a loan or anything, right?
Yeah, it would be, it wouldn't be.
Yeah.
Awarded money.
I'd be interested in hearing what Heather has to, like.
Is she still there?
She is.
Still, is she actually there? Oh, she fell asleep.
Which, what?
I am, I'm here. Um I, you know, it's it it's interesting, right? It's an interesting concept.
Mm-hmm.
It gives me hesitation only cause you know, we don't know, sometimes we wanna be the first community in the state, sometimes we don't, right? It could be an advantage or a disadvantage, um seeing that they've never worked with other Massachusetts communities. It does seem like an interesting idea that they'd be willing to do something like that. I don't know, you know, maybe they're they're probably actually, I would imagine, way better at finding grants than we are, right?
Mm.
Cause they're looking on the federal and the state levels and they're also looking different ways than what we're used to. The downside, I think, is if they don't have an ability to put in administrative costs for their fee and all the grants, right? Like a lot of times as a municipality, if we're working with a consultant, um and we get them to write a grant for us, we often have them write in their own administrative fees, so we cover the cost for that. And you know, if you're looking at something that's substantial, which would be a huge benefit to the town of a million dollars, you know, we have to have, what, fifty thousand in the bank just to be able to cover it. That being said, I mean, that's something if we were applying for, I'm sure we could always find a way to put money
Yeah.
in an account at a town. in an account at a town meeting that was accessible, so we could always have it if we needed it. But I, I, I don't know, I mean, it seems like a very fascinating idea that there'd be someone out there to help. My, part of my hesitation is, okay, if this guy's been cold calling for a while, I'm sure he didn't start with the letter H, Nate, right? And jumped to the middle of the alphabet, so why have the other three hundred and fifty-one communities or those he's reached out to not yet taken advantage of it? What are, what are they thinking? What do they know? What are they concerned about that we don't have on our docket yet?
Cause it's new.
Yeah, it's new and.
That's, yeah. I I'm not, I understand what you're saying, Heather, and I I agree, you don't just jump into something blind. But at the same time, if they're gonna tell us all the fees upfront, we can plan for this kind of stuff. We can see it coming and we can say, yes, this is a go, or no, there's no way we can afford the down payment, you know what I mean? So, and even if we get to that point and stuff goes horribly awry and the budget goes out of whack or something blows up in our face and that money isn't no longer there, they said that we could, you know, may, you know, decline it without any fees coming out of our pockets. So I, I think people are hesitant because it is new. Um I think if we go in it open-eyed and watch what we're doing, I think this could definitely uh be very useful for a small town like us.
We don't have the personnel available to do the research and to do the writing.
Right.
Where they do. And, I mean, any money that we can get for grants, I see as a bonus if it's gonna cost you ten percent. You know what I mean? And I'm I'm not talking about huge million dollar things, but you know, let's say, let's say, public safety. Let's say you're talking seven to ten million dollars, so, I mean, it's still, it's seven, you know, whatever their fee is, whatever our portion of.
He said five percent over.
So five percent of.
Over a million.
Fire, where my mind goes with this in the relatively short term, he and he did state during my meeting that there are some places that two years go by and then they say, hey, you know, sorry, this didn't work out, good, good, it was a good try, sorry about that, and you don't lose anything. But where my mind's going is if we could get them to apply for some sort of, say it's to get engineered plans for a public safety building, it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm not, I'm fairly certain that we could come up with the five to ten percent versus paying the whole seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah, cause that's just the plans, it's on the building.
Right. I mean, it's got, there's probably grants out there for the plans too, so.
And if we did choose to go down this path and enter an agreement with no promises or any sort of financial agreements, I would one hundred percent get it checked by KP law prior to.
Yeah. Oh, yes.
Prior to.
Well, maybe, I mean, have you reached out to them? Have they heard of these people?
I did not want to reach out to them prior to this conversation.
Another way of looking at it too, Heather, uh, cause I appreciate your points in terms of the fact that it is new. And granted, as you put it, we would be the first, but that might be uh an incentive for them to even work harder to be successful with the first, because the idea being then, we, other th, doors may open up to them. So I think that's another way of looking at the possibility of this, they would work pretty hard for us.
It's not like you have to apply for certain minimum number of grants working with them, only if you need them, you're up on.
Correct. Correct. We would show them our capital plan, which makes me a little hesitant because had I been in that seat, I would have been well aware that our capital plan was on the internet and went and snagged something to, but that's, that's sales.
Yeah, he's, yeah, he's in Toronto, I mean, come on, like really, he's gonna try to maneuver our little town website and.
Yeah, I I, I'm not sure if I agree though that he mentioned that there are private investors as well. I don't know how they would grant and, you know, particularly benefit from that. So unless I'm gonna do some research grant for some, I don't know, that'll be awesome, even if it's from private sector. That, he mentioned that there are some, but yeah.
Well, we probably should put it on the agenda so that we can, you know, kick it around and see if.
Maybe wanna table it so we can, we can.
Well, I don't know.
What are we tabling? What are we talking about?
We, we weren't expecting to do anything.
I mean, it's a no brainer, why don't we move forward? Let's do it.
I, I, I.
We're planning on taking action tonight, but I mean, if, that's entirely up to the board, it's entirely up to the board.
Something in the motion will take action.
Hey Nate, do you think it would be worth throwing out on a list serve and I know you would probably ask me which one, and I would say STEM or M M M A?
Yes. No.
But do you think it's worth just reaching out to the collective and seeing if anyone's ever heard of them? Just to cover our bases, to make sure that, you know, we're not missing something that someone else knows?
Like they're not being sued in five other states or something?
That's, like, I can do, I didn't wanna go too far into this with any of my bandwidth. I, if we table this for two weeks, we can have a more in-depth discussion. I respectfully ask that you don't ask me to send it out on STEM, cause then we'll be in a queue. Cause I, I do, I did my Google research and am fairly confident, like, I didn't look under every stone. But I do think if we toss this out to, to the STEM list serve sharks, then we're going to be not the first ones. But I, I would, Mr. Chairman, I would request that you give me the, that we table this until our October sixteenth meeting. I will do some additional background information and report back.
You report back to us at that particular point in time.
I will also have Carolyn review.
Check.
Sounds like a plan.
The contract so that we know all, we have all of our ducks a row ahead of heading in.
Let's do that, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds like a plan, good.
Alright.
Alright, um if the board would take a look at the item, consent agenda, as I go through them with you, to see if you have any questions or holds. Um we have the uh s, school roof, bond and anticipation notice. Uh do you wanna say anything about that to ex, at this particular?
Well, it's the same thing we did last year. We're waiting for the MSBA, the Mass School Building Authority, to finish up with the checklist for the school roof. This takes some time, but until they are complete, we cannot get a full, long-term loan.
Okay, um resignations, uh we have Melissa Call from the Cultural Council. Uh she was a member effective nine twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three. And we have appointments, uh Joey, Joe Moisen, member of the Cultural Council, effective six thirty, twenty twenty-four. Expirations, excuse me, uh Benjamin Sights, laborer for the DPW, expiration six thirty, twenty twenty-four. Robert Johnson, traffic control officer, police, six thirty, twenty twenty-four. Brian Cunningham, traffic control officer, police, expiration six thirty, twenty twenty-four. Item D, approval of the uh twenty-one, August twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, select board uh meeting minutes. Uh which we were all present for, I believe. Uh I, item E, wage authorization for the following, Benjamin Sights, laborer, DPW, twenty-two eighteen per hour, excuse me. Robert Johnson, traffic control officer, police, fifty dollars per hour. Brian Cunningham, traffic control officer, police, uh fifty dollar per hour. Are there any questions or holds on any of these items?
I got questions about the two traffic control officers.
Okay.
These are folks that would be um working for details, right? This, these would just be a couple more gentlemen added to the pool of detail officers we have to come out, call as needed and sign up as needed.
Yeah, and this.
And just for this project.
Yeah, and this is reimbursed by MassDOT. We paid out and then they get it back based upon the town center project funding. And the people that have been appointed last round and this round are aware that the well dries up at the end of this project. And that they can maintain their traffic control status as long as the select board appoints them as such. But they're not gonna be as much work come a year from now.
For forthcoming projects, they can stay on the list, the call list, okay, good.
Yeah.
That's all.
Any other questions or holds on this? Seeing none, if someone would make a motion to ex, uh accept and pass the consent agenda?
How moved?
Motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, are there any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Both? Motion carried. Uh we move to new business.
Mr. Chairman, can I respectfully ask that since it would not create a quorum and he would be involved, that we invite Amit from the Finance Committee to join us at the, at the table?
Sure.
Thank you.
Were we expecting the other members?
No.
Okay. Alright, on the new business, the, we need to sign the special town meeting warrant. Nate, turn it over to you if you want.
Yeah, alright, so as it done in the past, this is a special town meeting warrant. There is a complete hybrid review at the next select board meeting where I will open up the, the warrant and discuss. I've learned quite a bit from my first public hybrid hearing on this and will be doing things slightly differently and keeping things more concise. But that will give us the opportunity to review it with the general public. But here today, I am willing to answer any questions for the select board or Amit, if they have them, there, if you have them. There are six articles, they are all fairly cut and dry. Article one is paying the assessment that was turned down at the annual town meeting to its full. As we are aware, the other communities voted for it. There is also a eleven to twelve thousand dollar difference in the liability insurance line that came in after annual town meeting. So I remedy that situation in my proposal as well. The proposal this year does not use any cuts. It is a one-time transfer from other line items. I do feel as if it is robbing Peter to pay Paul and one-time use. But if the money is there, mostly it is utilizing the remainder of the debt that expired this past year. It's not what we really wanted to do, but I could not justify not proposing using it and making a service or personnel cut. There was a decent amount of money left over in the line item for the DPW due to the fact that he has been operating two employees down for the first quarter of the year. There was a decent amount of money in the veterans line because we currently have no chapter one fifteen veterans that are seeking those benefits. That's something I have spoken with the veteran service officer about looking into. But a major part of the formula for chapter one fifteen is that you have to be a renter of a certain income and there are not a, there's not a plethora of rentable homes here in Hubbardston. So that kind of disqualifies a lot of people straight out the gate. We can discuss that further. Does anyone have any more questions on my proposed article one?
Doesn't, not to hear.
This would obviously go to the Finance Committee and to a public hearing at our next meeting anyway. Before any sort of vote, Candace and I are going to make a short edition of Hubbardston headlines about this. And we will make sure to get information out and promote special town meeting to the fullest extent possible. Article two would be funding the school. It would be funding the school assessment to, to its full assessed value. Any questions there? Article three is amending, amending an article from the annual town meeting in June. The way we did it in June was we had taken a lump sum approach to pay some monies that were from twenty twenty-three and some monies that were from twenty twenty-four when we were supposed to split them. So this remedies that situation. This does not come from taxpayer money, it comes from the PEG access funds received from Spectrum Charter as part of cable bills. That is article four as well. Article five is to pay six thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars from fee, free cash to pay the town share of a pump replacement at the Hubbardston, Hubbardston Center School, including all costs incidental and related thereto. In June, if you remember, I sent out a bunch of emails because the town, the slate building and the school and library did not have water. This was a result of that. It is over five thousand dollars, so the bill was forwarded to us. I do have the exact bill, if that's something anyone wants to see. But due to the regional agreement, we are required to pay this almost seven thousand dollar bill. Article six, I'm going, if you hold on, I'm gonna open my explanation because I also am a little bit confused by article six.
That's great.
But it is just, it's accepting a Massachusetts general law to do the following. Treasurer collector Markowski has requested acceptance of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter two hundred A, subsection fifty-nine A, to the special town meeting warrant. This section provides municipal treasurers a procedure for disposing of funds held by the town which are deemed abandoned. This process is known as tallings. Tallings allow treasurers to timely remedy unclaimed funds, including uncashed payroll checks, uncashed amounts payable, untouched accounts payable checks and certain tax overpayments where the property owner cannot be found. Adopting this statute allows for a more efficient and expedited process for the processing of unclaimed such abandoned funds, allowing the treasurer to take these funds into the general fund after there have been several attempts to notify check recipient. Without adopting this measure, the town must follow Mass Unclaimed Property Divisions Annual Reporting Guidelines, follow a three-year dormancy period, use due diligence to notify the recipients and, and the funds and give the funds to the state annually. Adoption of this will allow the to, town to retain the funds. We've all seen those commercials that say, find unclaimed money now, that's this.
What about, for example, with the project out here and the COVID money and the checks for the, taking the land that people never have come in to yet because they have to pick them up personally and we've done everything we can to get them to them? Is, would that include their checks?
In theory, if we, if we, if we did not have the ARPA problem, yes.
In theory, yeah.
Like if that was cut from a longstanding permanent revenue source, this would come into effect. Because of the whole ARPA questionable timeframe thing, which is going to come up at a future meeting cause I would like to clarify the situation.
Mm-hmm.
It's likely not.
Yeah. Is this, so is this like a yearly activity on his behalf or will this be a one-time?
No, it's a once and done. We would accept it, it would go on to a document with all of the other Massachusetts general laws that were accepted by town meeting. And then it would be good, it would allow the treasurer collector to do this as she saw appropriate.
I doubt we know the amount value.
We do not.
Well, that's where it gets kinda gray, right? It says, um, you know, tallings allow treasurers a timely remedy, what's timely, you know? And then further below it says, you know, we can, we can grab up these funds after several attempts to notify the check recipient. What's several attempts? You know, I mean, I guess it's.
Fun fact, Hubbardston has been doing this for years. This is just us.
I guess it, uh.
Well, in the law, it said, I was reading it, I have read the whole, it was very long and lengthy. But the initial said after a year of it being unclaimed and then it can start the process. So I think that's the initial start. That doesn't give you an end, Chris, but at least it gives a start.
So this would, so this would do away with the three-year dormancy period and make it a one-year dormancy period?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
For, for all intents and purposes?
I do have a question on article two and apologize if I don't remember, is the amount greater than what we had initially approved for the school?
Article one?
Uh, article two.
Article two, yes, the amount is greater by about seventy thousand dollars, sixty-nine thousand.
Uh.
Cause we had approved them at a straight six percent and they, what they wanted was like seven. Cause we had approved them at a straight six percent and they, what they wanted was like seven point three percent.
Yeah, wasn't there like a vote taken at the meeting as well at the same day or?
Yep. That's what this is doing, it's amending that vote.
Oh, okay. Thought that meant was called in the meeting as well, I thought it was denied.
Well, yeah, but, so the other towns approve, so therefore we're now back into a corner and we're forced, yeah, we can't.
Forced to approve.
And it takes at least two communities to get the Department of Education to, to look into it.
To approve. Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Have we tried doing anything about the state law, like trying to at least tell or ask, okay, state formula?
Yeah, sure have, and, and we're going to continue and do something about it.
Yeah, no, I had a, I had a feeling, but I just, yeah, all right.
I'm this week going to check in with the school system to see what our, uh, residency numbers are because our formulas are based on October one numbers. So as it is October two, we should now know the number for you like that, yeah, we should now know October one numbers.
If there's anything we can do as residents, let us know, you know, taking out anybody.
Anything else from the board, questions on their warrants? If not, uh, could we get a motion to, uh, sign the special town meeting warrant?
I'll make a motion to sign the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Motion made in second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none?
Well, yeah, no, I have discussion, I, I mean, I wanna jump back to Article six. So, so somewhere in all that legalese, it says it's going to switch from three years to one year.
That is my understanding. And we would obviously have the time to discuss this further between the signing and the town meeting where we bring it to a vote of the residents. It has been approved by legal counsel and I can provide a more in-depth explanation of it.
Just a timeframe, I think we need to be, have a more exact timeframe.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, if it's in there, it's in there and it's easy, but, um, I'm going off of your translation of what's in there and I'm certainly not gonna, you know, opine on the legalese because that's not my, that's not my expertise, but, um, if somewhere we can find out that it's just going from three years to one year, I have no problem with that. But to say it's going from three years to somebody's opinion about what a long enough time period and how many attempts to, to reach somebody, I, I would have a problem with it.
Correct. Heather sent a order sponsor from Amesbury?
I don't know what that is.
Heather, you wanna speak to this?
Yeah, so it's just, uh, if you pull it up, Nate, so they did a summary on this, so I think it was a little more detailed than what you just went through. So documents about tallings can include uncashed accounts payable checks, uncashed payroll checks, certain tax overpayments. It says adopting this statute allows for more efficient and expedited process for the disposing of abandoned funds, allowing the treasurer to take these funds as revenue, and you talked about that after several attempts to notify the check recipient. Once one full year has passed since the original issuance, without adopting it, and you already covered that piece, but it looks like it says here after one full year.
Yep.
Has passed. So I don't, so Chris, I don't know if that answers your question, but it seems like the answer is once one full year has passed, you're in.
I hear ya, and, and that answers part of my question, but what, what is several attempts? I mean, you know, do, do we have to call them four times, we have to call them fifty times? Do we call them one time and, and, you know?
But this is a state law, right?
Yeah.
So it's, that would be up to the state, you know, if you needed to get specific, I mean.
Well, I'm sure it's in there specifically, it's just very lengthy and very legally.
So, Article six, section nine A, if you look at B,
Sure is, yep.
It says any funds held in the custody of a city, town or district may be presumed by a city, town or district treasurer to be abandoned unless came, unless claimed by the corporation, organization beneficiary, beneficiary or person entitled thereto within one year after the date prescribed for payment or delivery. So it, that's where it changes it from three to one in subsection B.
So it doesn't, but that's.
But what's our obligation to let these people know, hey, you got money sitting here, is there any?
The obligation.
I mean, it says several attempts, but.
The obligation is that if we don't do it, the state takes it and doesn't.
I think you have to send emails as per see, you have to send mail or put it on the website or newspaper.
Good reason, yes, sure, yeah.
Yeah.
You're right.
I mean, I, I'm all for it, I just think there's a huge gray area there, you know, we're, we're gonna take some constituents refund check or something and, you know, then we're gonna go down the road of they never got a notice, they didn't know they had this money, yada, yada, yada.
I'm assu- it's, I'm.
We can't assume anything.
No, true, you're, you're true, um, but like when they go and start going after real estate for, you know, lien and things like that, um, or, yeah, any, well, like say you don't pay your real estate taxes or anything like that, it ends up, you, not only do you get the letters, um, you also get it's posted in the paper and things like that. I'm guessing that it's going to be this same kind of, you have to do this, you have to do this, you have to do this, and it'll be up to Mary to, or our treasurer to do every single thing exactly the way it's supposed to be, and then after you do all those steps, then you can take it. Just like real estate or anything else.
It's, it's not arbitrarily just taking money.
After this meeting, I am going to speak with the treasurer collector about if there is a,
The steps.
either a current standard operating procedure or if she would be willing to work with me to establish one, to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would think with the laws that we have in the state that you would, are required, I, I don't know, but I would think you'd require to send a certified letter at some point, a phone call and, um, but we just need to see it in black and white.
Something, yeah, yeah.
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 Heather, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, so section C on the MGL, treasurer of a city, our town, holding funds on blah, 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 um, presumed to be abandoned on the section shall post a notice entitled, the notice names the persons appearing to be owners of funds held by and deemed abandoned, the notice shall specify names of the persons available, shall provide a description of the appropriate method of claiming the funds, provided however, the deadline shall not be less than sixty days after. The treasurer shall, may post such notice using either methods, mailing notice first-class mail or if the district has a website, official website, posting for not less than sixty days. The apparent owner fails to respond within sixty days after mailing or posting of the notice, the treasurer shall cause a notice of the check to be published in a newspaper of general circulation printed in English in the county in which the city or town is located.
Okay.
Um, and then it says, event the funds appearing to be owed or a hundred dollars or more, deadline is provided, the notice has passed, no claim of funds have been made. The treasurer shall then cause an additional notice, um, same manner as above, to be published in a newspaper, general circulation, same thing in the county. Notice shall provide extended deadline beyond which funds shall not be claimed and such deadline shall be at least one year from the date of publication of notice. Once the final deadline has passed, funds owed. Um, sorry, I'm skipping here. Uh, so the person payment of those funds are underlying liability for which those funds were originally intended. Um, and then they become available. Does that answer your notice question now?
Asked and answered, thank you very much, I approve Article six.
So, Heather.
So, there's a motion on the floor and seconded, uh, for the signing of the special town meeting. If there's no further questions? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passed? Now, we have to sign it.
Yep, we'll sign it on our way.
Okay, make sure we all sign it before we go home. Alright, uh.
Heather, can you pop in at some point between now and the end of the week?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Just not Friday.
Yeah, on Friday, they're doing concrete work.
Not Friday. Not Friday, yeah.
Yeah, I'll pass Friday in that case.
Okay, alright, uh, item six B, FY twenty-five budgetary guidelines, Nate?
As with every year, I provided a FY twenty-five budget priorities and guidelines document and memo.
Memo?
So, yeah.
The witness memo.
If you guys have reviewed that, that is something that we can discuss. It states, as we develop the FY twenty-five budget, we aim to uphold fiscal responsibility and prudent financial management. Our budget priorities, commitments and guidelines reflect this goal. Key budget priorities for FY twenty twenty-five, manage rising education costs. Develop short and long-term strategies to effectively manage escalating education costs within the QRSD system. Optimizing town services, conducting a comprehensive review of town services and staffing to balance service levels and costs. Explore staff retention salaries, salaries, strategies. Controlling inflation, proactively analyze current costs and trends to minimize the impacts of inflation on goods and services. In FY twenty-five, we remain committed to reducing reliance on free cash in the operating budget, using conservative revenue estimates, meeting debt, capital and savings goals to maintain services and bond rating. Our budget aims to support constituent-focused professional services, high-quality affordable education, recreation and cultural programs, strategic infrastructure maintenance and enhancements, robust policies and plans for long-term fiscal, fiscal stability, cost-effective public safety, land use and union services. FY twenty twenty-five budget guidelines, personnel pay increases per contracts or classification plan, level funding of FY twenty twenty-four non-personnel expenses barring certain items with written justification. The focused approach of aligning priorities, commitments and guidelines will promote fiscal health and community prosperity. That is my proposed guidelines.
Nice, Lisa.
Any questions or comments?
I do, Nate, just one question, so at the very end with those two bullet points for the budget guidelines, one of them refers that, um, people are gonna be following the personnel contracts and the wage and comp chart.
Yep.
Um, are you proposing that, uh, the wage and comp chart stay exactly the way it is and uh, people from merit-based would move up a step or what is your proposal as far as, you know, non-union employees who are not under personal contract?
That is something that we would determine as we get closer to the actual completion of the budget. I don't want to tie us to anything at this time because we do not know how certain variables are gonna come out. Whereas if we do say a, say two percent or one step, that's tied to it where we do have some very excellent staff members and I would like to withhold the ability to potentially maybe offer them more than a two percent COLA which is equivalent to a pay cut in modern economics.
Okay, so just for clarification purposes, so I'm a department head, I'm watching this meeting, I'm getting this guidance and I'm starting to prepare my budget and I don't have a union, let's say I'm at the library, right, I just have non-union staff and maybe I have a personnel agreement, maybe I don't. How am I preparing those folks' wages at this time? Am I just level funding them from last year and not touching them at this point and then I'll adjust them later?
Yes. You're lo- Yeah. Yeah, that, I have, as done last year, I will adjust the personnel lines. I explain that to the department heads and boards in their guidance.
Okay, so that'll be clearly communicated so people understand what they're supposed to be doing?
Yes.
And you're also, you're also gonna explain to folks what a level funded budget means or a level funded minus personnel?
Absolutely.
Okay, otherwise no comments and I thought it was a, um, nice couple of sheets of paper, bold.
Okay, um, again, any other comments? If not, could we have a motion to accept the FY twenty-five budgetary guidelines?
So moved.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Heather?
She said.
Hi.
Okay. Opposed? Motion passed, okay. Moving to the next item. The E O E A support letter, Nate?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as you know, Francois Steiger and myself have been working with Mass Power Choice to move forward on a municipal aggregation plan. Our Mass Power Choice, our municipal consultant has asked that you consider signing on to this which would support the passing of H thirty-eight fifty-two, a House bill that would speed up the process of the DPU when reviewing aggregation plans by establishing a ninety-day time limit. Currently, the DPU is taking nearly three years to review plans. It would substantially increase municipalities' flexibility in operating their programs and add, currently the DPU regulates all elements of the programs, this legis- legislation would separate structural elements from implementation elements.
So the rest of the letter is missing, but I'm going with, after I read the first part, I got the gist of it.
Are there any questions?
Hey, Nate, what is, uh, I, I know I should note this, but when you say E O E A, all I can think of is Executive Office of Elder Affairs.
Energy.
And, listening, what is it, energy what?
The Executive Office of Energy Affairs.
Okay, if you Google E O E A, the first like twenty hits I was getting were, uh, elder services, that's why I, I was looking at that.
Elder services.
So, in a nutshell, you're looking for us to approve, approve this to expedite the process?
I'm ask, in a nutshell, I'm asking you to authorize me to sign on to a letter on behalf of the town
Supporting a bill.
Supporting a bill that would expedite the process.
That would be the motion that we would need.
And.
The, 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 the process of getting us on a group electrical plan, a town group electrical plan
Yes.
Or reviewing the opportunity of a town electrical place.
And the town of Hubbardston, if authorized, would not be the only municipality on this, he was saying there are, there are many.
Okay.
I did, Heather, I did forget the second E, I meant E O E E A. E O E A is elder affairs, I'm, I'm, I'm messing up my own acronyms after telling Chris that I wouldn't put acronyms on the.
So I don't want you to put acronyms on the, uh.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to, um, allow Nate to sign on
Okay, we have a motion.
the E O E E A support letter.
E.
Right?
No.
Did I get that right?
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
And second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Yeah.
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No, she's not opposed, she's, she's.
Okay, I'm, motion passed, okay.
Thanks, Cody.
We move to, uh, item five, D, the proposed date for volunteer appreciation night?
It's a select board meeting.
Oh, it's a select board meeting, okay, it's a Monday.
So that seems, that seems like a good idea, but, um, unfortunately November, for me, November twentieth, I'm out anyway because I have a, uh, special town meeting in Paxton.
Right before Thanksgiving, that sounds like fun.
A celebratory, I'm sure.
So, long and short here, when the members of the staff and I were talking about doing this and what we could provide as a cost-effective way of showing just a little bit of thanks to volunteers, we began to talk about how it is a little bit awkward having it right around Christmas and how a lot of people are very, very busy at that timeframe. So the idea came, hey, since Thanksgiving is about Thanksgiving, why don't we move it up a month and do it then? I didn't have any reason as to why we couldn't do that, so here we are making this proposal. The ladies in the office have already purchased notebooks to put stickers on and kinda like what Bobby did for us last year.
Okay.
But we'll also get pens and it'll just be a nice little kit given to everybody who volunteers over the course of the year, just not really doing enough to show our thanks, but showing our appreciation nonetheless.
And when is the twentieth?
Twentieth is your second meeting in November.
The Monday, and when is Thanksgiving?
That Thursday.
That Thursday.
So what's the twenty-third, fourth?
Yeah, the twenty-third.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Can we get a motion to accept, accept and scheduling the voluntary appreciation night for November twentieth?
So moved.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
And second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Seeing none? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay. Full business. I don't have anything to eat, Nate?
Nope, not for whole business.
Okay, so we'll go to, uh, town, your TA report.
Alright, one second. I shared my town administrator report in written form on the website earlier today. The cover photo this this week is a photo of Chris, Katie, and some members of the Lions Club at the Pavilion dedication just yesterday. I mentioned the crisp air and changing leaves right before talking about how I've been spending a lot of time doing the budget development and preparation of the operations and capital documents to send out soon. The capital improvement plan documents were due back to me on September twenty-eighth. We did not get a ton this year, but there are, but everyone did very well with the new kind of updated forms and online aspects that I had been doing this year. The, I met with the planning board last week to discuss their goals and objectives for the next few years so that we can be on the same page when DLTA or technical assistance grants pop up cause they can sometimes just come out of the blue and be there. That's kind of what happened with the agricultural and ecotourism DLTA last year. Fortunately, we had some ideas, but had we not gotten together relatively quickly, that could have been a grant that we did not receive. Provided a public works update. The public works department is now fully staffed with two new employees, both named Ben. So that should be very interesting for Travis and the guys over
Ben number one and Ben number two.
over the next few months. They are prepping for the winter ahead and I'm very excited to have Travis be back to fully staffed. As I believe I mentioned at the last meeting, we had our boarding committee summit two weeks ago where a training on the open meeting law was held and a update on what was going on in the worlds of different boards and committees. So it was had it with overall, it was a wonderful event. It was attended by over twenty boarding committee members and I couldn't ask for more for such an event, cause I know people don't truly enjoy open meeting law training. As was mentioned several times during this meeting, the Hubbardson Lions Club held a dedication event this past Sunday or yesterday, donating a pavilion to the town at the Curtis Recreational Fields. It was a amazing event. It was very well attended. Everyone spoke wonderfully. Katie and Chris presented a certificate signed by Jeff and I in appreciation of the Lions Club for all of their hard work. It is something I've never seen in any of the other communities I've worked in. This was from soup to nuts, all under a year, and it was quite impressive. So Bravo Lions Club.
Can you pull that out again for a minute? That just, that that I was just pointing out, that's a that's a good picture of it, you know.
Yes.
Sorry for to drill.
In case you missed it, the last episode of Hubbardson Headlines had a very familiar face. It was Katie speaking to me about all of the events like the light fight in None Such Night in the Hubbardson Fair. It's it's a good watch. You can definitely tell the appreciation and dedication that she has to not only the town, but the events, so check that out. On a grants front, we have been kind of trying to ramp up. We've will be submitting a competitive green communities grant for potential HVAC pumps at the public library. Additionally, I am preparing a community compact grant application that would aid us in funding our five-year municipal staff training plan and exploring cost-cutting automation techniques. I made sure to avoid certain automation words that scare people. I also assisted the council on aging in preparing a CPA grant packet for the remainder of their deck project. On a procurement, on the procurement side, on Thursday, we opened up the IT vendors. I, there are two finalists that I am reviewing and calling their references and crunching some numbers. I'd like to thank Tony Walker and Bobby Tebow for helping me open up those packets and score them. It was, it's a lot easier when you have multiple scores and you don't just have to go by your own. The DPW roof replacement project will be starting this month and I am about to kick off the procurement process for the boiler at Hubbardson Center School. Unfortunately, where I mentioned before that we were going to aim to go through a cooperative omnia, the quote came in over four times the amount of money we have. So I'm going to try to work with smaller companies to get that closer to what we can actually maintain.
Afford is the word, afford.
Make sure you go out and vote on October tenth. There is a special preliminary election to select one Republican. If you are a Republican, there will be a contested ballot on your ballot. If you are in any other other parties, unfortunately, at this time, there will not be a contested ballot for you.
Sure.
Unless you're an independent or a Republican.
Independents, they can go either way.
At the end of the month, we will be having a town office spirit week. On Monday will be Crazy Hat Day, Tuesday, Halloween, Wednesday, Farmer Day, and Thursday, Tie-Dye Day. So if you're coming to town hall that week, please dress accordingly. Other, other than that, that will be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, any questions? Seeing none. Um, I have no policies that I'm aware of. We can do, okay. That is not reasonably anticipated with a chair. Does anyone have anything?
Yes, yes.
Can I ask what it is before we decide to have a discussion on it?
I wanna talk about the boiler that we just mentioned. I mean, boiler, if I recall, didn't we do a repair to this boiler?
We did not.
We did not.
So when we were talking about the repair versus the cost of the boiler, it was going to be fourteen thousand dollars versus what they said at that time was fifty thousand dollars. It was determined by the finance committee and the select board at that time that it was a better ROI or return on investment to just seek the full replacement of the boiler because how many years would we've really gotten out of a fifteen thousand dollar investment into a thirty-two-year-old boiler?
Okay, so I I guess I was thinking that we had made the repair necessary and we were, you know, in a parallel work stream figuring how to replace it sooner than later.
No, we did not make, we did not make the repair.
The repair is not done, okay, understood. Uh, the gym floor, I mean, we were talking about roofs earlier. I think we might have touched about this. That's all been repaired, right? The damage that was done by the water and whatnot. And then, um, I was told to revisit this in the fall slash autumn. It is now the fall slash autumn. Where do we stand on the clock repair?
I'll I'll even them tomorrow.
I was wondering if you were gonna ask that on that, cause I noticed the like, oh, it's still not done yet.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Public press? Motion to adjourn?
Yes, moved.
Motion made to adjourn?
Don't leave, we got a second.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Hope you feel better, Heather.